All right, you're good.
All right, do we have any public comment? I don't know if you can see all, I can't see all the pictures, so I don't know if you can, Brendan.
No one is raising their hand or anything, no.
Okay. All right, so let's review the financial report for March 31st. Tracy or Rita?
Rita's gonna share with us, I think.
I'll try to my best.
You can do this Rita, I have faith in you.
I've only done a couple Zoom meetings so far, so.
Yeah, I know, we're all getting, everybody's, it's a learning curve.
All right.
Go ahead. So anything in particular to highlight Rita?
I was gonna share my screen here and I just gotta find out which one. So can you see it?
We can.
Yeah.
Good work.
All right. Yeah, you know, I just have some narrative on the second page that highlighting that March financials includes the half of the teacher grievance, so you will see that the available balance for certified has gone down because we've added the half of the grievance and also we're still waiting on $100,000 from excess cost for special education tuition. You know, just those, those are the big highlights. The variance. I also have to reduce the finance director salary down to 90%, so that'll help the.
With that $100,000?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The $100,000 will make up, you know, some of the deficit and also the reduction in the finance director salary down to 20%. That'll be done in April report. I do believe that we're still going to be on target with what we projected in January as far as balancing the budget. Are there any questions on any line items?
Could, could you, this is Lynn, could you explain? I'm just looking at the, the excess cost credit again, that hundred thousand dollars, I, that seems to have slipped my mind what where that is.
So we've already received the first payment from the state that goes towards the special ed tuition over, you know, the high tuition kids that are outplaced. We received the first payment in February, the second payment comes end of April or in April sometime. So I'm, I'm anticipating, or we're anticipating approximately another hundred thousand dollars from the state to help cover the special ed tuition costs for outplaced kids. So that will reduce the deficit.
Or reduce the deficit down to 97,000.
Right, right, and then, like I said, I have to reduce the, the director's salary and I do anticipate that some of these encumbrances are going to come down because of the the COVID, I just haven't done any projections because we've been a little crazy, but I can do that for the next financials.
This, this is Lynn again.
Yep.
I have another question, if that's okay, Mark? My question has to do with the.
Absolutely.
If you go down to the bottom where the narrative piece is, the employee health benefit encumbrances. Um. We heard reports that there may be, at, at last week's Board of Finance meeting, we heard report from Jim Rivers, which I didn't see any numbers for that, you know, I didn't see any chart or anything. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the superintendent projected based on information that they had received from Lockton that there might be, we might not be spending, need to spend the money that we had thought we would need to spend because use of healthcare has decreased during the COVID-19 crisis.
Yeah, I was on, I was on the call Lynn too, and that is correct, the claims are down. You know, the actual expenses are down, I still have a concern that what was budgeted for revenue from what was anticipated revenue last year by the director, I am, I'm still concerned that we are not going to receive all that revenue from the employee paychecks, so I do, I feel like I have to do another analysis, I did an analysis in January and I don't feel that we got all of my answers to my questions, so I'm more than willing to do another analysis, but the main thing is, is the revenue that we get from grants and employee paychecks was, in my opinion, over projected. So if, if you look at this report, what you'll see, I'll highlight it here, employee benefits, I've encumbered as much as we have in group insurance as much as what was put in the budget, but and we're over by 38,000 and that's mainly pensions and I believe it's pensions, when people leave, they, they get paid out their vacation time and the pension contribution that we had to make was higher than anticipated, so so I, I can do another analysis like I did in January to, to see if we're actually depositing what Lockton told us to, to deposit.
So Rita, when you do that, that next analysis, do you get actual numbers from Lockton?
No, I, you, well, what I use is, my note down here is that it says it's health and benefits are encumbered based on the projection from last year, March 15, 2019. Okay, so it's based on that number, I don't change that number even though the claims are going down because I, I feel like we still want a surplus in that fund, we had a, we had a deficit, we want to make sure we get that surplus, right? So I will stick with the Lockton estimates and then I will see how much the employees have contributed, how much the grants have contributed and how much the retirees have contributed. And I'll tell you from my first estimate in January, the grants weren't too much off, but the retirees and the employees' revenue projected was hundreds of thousand dollars off. So, you know, like I said, I'll do it again and then we can discuss it at the next Finance and Audit Committee if you'd like.
Well, it's a good place to be in that we're potentially could be better off than we thought, given what they're saying about.
Well, definitely the claims will help, yeah, the, the reduction in claims is really gonna help, but I don't, I don't want everybody to think that, oh, it's because we contributed what we were supposed to, because it's not.
Got it.
Well, I mean, this is Lynn again, I don't know whether contributed what we were supposed to is the right wording to use.
Yeah.
Because we are, we are with, we are with, we were taking out of people's paychecks the commensurate amount that should be taken out, so I caution us not to say we weren't contributing what we should. Just the projections that were done a year ago may have been when Chris Johnson was still here, maybe off the mark, that's all.
Yeah, the contributions are being done bi-weekly from the employee paychecks and yeah.
Right, I just don't want there to be any misinformation out there in the public that the Board of Ed is not withholding the proper amount from people's paychecks.
Oh, right, I see what you're saying. Okay. And the.
And, and by asking the question, I wasn't saying, oh, we should bank on the surplus that Jim Rivers quoted at the Board of Finance meeting last week, but I think, I just wanted us to be, I think we need to pay close attention to this, this this line item here, could, it could hold a variance one way or the other.
I agree.
The line, that line item though does not, that only, what is encumbered is only what is in that budget line, the revenues do come in as credits, so if we don't get the credits, um, it's, I'm trying to, trying to explain it, it's gonna be, maybe once I do the analysis, I can explain it better if I have my document.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any indication about the bus contract due to our budget?
So I'm actually speaking with M&amp;J's manager tomorrow and then after I speak to the M&amp;J manager, then I'm speaking with the attorney from Shipman and Goodwin to determine what the next steps are. They, they initially were not responding to any of the requests we asked them for, they didn't want to give any kind of information about what they were paying their employees, I mean, from a business standpoint, I can understand, because if they tell us what it costs them to pay their drivers, you know, salaries and benefits, then when they develop their next, you know, contract for us, we're gonna say, we're not paying you this amount, we know you only need X, Y, and Z to pay your drivers. So I get why they didn't want to share the information. It sounds like they may have had a turn and maybe a little more willing to negotiate now than they were maybe a month ago, so I'll know more tomorrow and I'll report out to the board in my update on Friday.
Okay.
We know we're not getting away, we're not, what, what I hear from all the local superintendents is we should bank on paying at least 80% of the contract and some people are gonna end up paying 100% of their contracts, even though we're not being provided a service, but we're gonna let the attorneys make the negotiation because it's not just our district. M&amp;J, every district that is involved that has M&amp;J and DATCO and First Student and all the other bus companies are in the same position, they're all jockeying for position, they don't want to give up a penny, so. So more to come on that.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? No, okay. All right, so let's look at, review of the, there are four is the problem areas due to the epidemic, anything?
So I still don't have, my, okay, I'm, yeah, I still don't have a whole lot of information, I hope to have it soon, we had another call with the commissioner today and the governor and the commissioner, Kathy Dempsey, who is the chief financial officer for the state, said that the superintendents are gonna be receiving a document that spells out some of the flexibilities around our grants. She said it was coming today, but it's 6:15 and it hasn't come yet, so I don't think it's coming today. But they are, the state is trying to, they put in for waivers on federal and state grants to try to give us some flexibility because as you know, the grants can only be used the way they're specifically spelled out and that's not necessarily what we need now during the COVID-19 school closures, so they're trying to give us some flexibility with spending and potentially offer us the opportunity to maybe roll over some money into next year because they, they're aware that when our kids come back, in addition to needing supports academically, because they haven't been officially in school for a number of weeks now, that some of our kiddos in terms of social emotional supports are gonna need things that we're not even currently offering. We haven't even figured into our budget because the trauma of being out of school and all the things that are happening in their families as a, as a result of of the virus, so they're trying to give us some flexibility, but I don't have details yet until I get that document that's supposed to lay out what we're allowed to, to do with each of the grants, because as you know, our district relies heavily on grants.
Right. Is it costing us any extra money in special ed support to do this long distance support for these kids?
So that's an interesting question, I don't know, I know, I see Suzanne Craws on the phone, I don't know if she can answer a question about it costing us more money. Suzanne, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. At this point, we haven't, we've been using our already budgeted resources. At this point, it is working, but again, you know, it's hard to say, we, you know, we're a few weeks in and I know we're learning more and more about our needs of our students. We are using a lot of the community resources and creating a shared drive for our staff to access as we hear about families who, you know, have lost their, their jobs or facing, you know, housing concerns, you know, using the community resources as best we can.
Thanks Suzanne.
Another issue that has come up is the issue of the expenditures to provide the meals to the children that we've been doing a great job at and thank you to the staff who are doing that, but I know it's, it's added some unanticipated costs to the tune of about $15,000 a week to our, our budget and we talked, should, should we fill folks in on what's happening, you know, that we're gonna be pursuing, we're trying to figure out whether we can pursue funding from FEMA for that?
Sure, so we reached out today, Lynn asked the question if we had reached out on our own to find out about the FEMA funds that are available and we hadn't, and Eric is also reaching out to the Connecticut State Department of Ed's Nutrition Services to see if there, if there's something special that the state can do for us. But because there's a weekly, about a $15,000 weekly deficit in food service, obviously any surplus that they have in that department is gonna be drained very quickly. So we're looking to have that department, you know, sort of reimbursed for all that they're doing, it's a, you know, it's a service we can't get rid of, it's a necessity, it has to happen. But $15,000 a week is a lot of money. So we are reaching out to FEMA, but it's a, that application goes through the town, so I, I read through what was sent to us by the attorney, but looks like there's a, it's kind of multi-layered, it's gonna take us a little while to get through the application process, I sent the email to Jim Rivers letting him know we were interested in filing that application and that I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get it in there because, like I said, 15 grand a week is a lot.
And Debbie, I know you just reached out to the town today.
Yes.
Um. Have we heard anything back from the town, has, has the town manager responded saying, yeah, we're, we have FEMA things in the works and we'll, we'll include you in that or anything?
Not yet, but I'll give it a day or two and then I'll reach back out and ask the question again, because it's really important.
I think it would be, yeah, it would be helpful and we might wanna, we might wanna communicate with, I don't know, if we don't get a response, we might wanna communicate with other people from the town council and/or the Board of Finance about the need to, to make sure the town helps us pursue this, because we can't, we just can't do, FEMA won't let us apply.
Right, it's a municipal fund, right, okay. Thank you.
I have a quick comment, is that okay?
Yeah.
I did receive a
Go ahead.
Email today from, I'm part of the GFOA, so the government's association and I received a PowerPoint presentation about the FEMA fund, so I'll send it to you guys so that, and to Eric, so that you can just look at, look at it and just see what, what the PowerPoint says about the FEMA funds.
Thanks Rita.
I just got that today, though, I'll, I'll share it with you guys.
Any other questions for the, for the board?
And you know, the, the other added thing is, there's just so much uncertainty about how long we'll be in this situation, so.
So one of the things that came up today.
Hard to plan.
Yeah, well, like I said to my leadership team, you have to have a plan if we return and then a plan if we don't return. But today in the conference call with the commissioner, he again said it's the governor's call if we return and it, and that they've let the governor know, the sooner we know whether we're coming back or not, the better it is for school systems. So he's clear on that, I don't know if that's gonna motivate him to make the decision any faster, but the commissioner did say that he wanted us to be thinking about things like providing virtual summer school, because he can't anticipate what it's gonna look like two or three months down the road. So that didn't make me feel like we were coming back anytime soon, if we're talking about virtual summer school, so. As I called Neil right after, I said, I don't think we're coming back, even though no one has made that call yet. Yeah, so we're just waiting, but you know, Massachusetts called it, they're, the governor in Massachusetts said no more school for the rest of the year, so I don't know for, how we cannot do that, given that they're supposed to be making decisions regionally, so we'll, we'll see.
Any other? All right, let's go on to the, I guess it's the Board of Finance question, discussion regarding reconsideration of the budget based upon this epidemic. Anyone have some input into that, then you wanna?
Well, I mean, I, I know several people, many people in this, in this meeting were on the Board of Finance meeting last week. You know, Doug knows that, that it was really hard for us because you all could see things we couldn't and I know that Tyler Griffin is working with the town to try to make a better platform for us to be relating in future meetings. There were, you know, 25 or so questions that were put forward, thankfully to the Board of Finance ahead of time, so it gave Dr. Youngberg a chance to respond, but one of the questions that came up in several different ways was if we had had it to do it over again, I'm paraphrasing, you know, if, if we had known what was going to happen, would we be asking for the budget that we're asking for now? At the time, I counseled the super, acting superintendent not to answer that question, because that really is a Board of Ed question and I, I hope that we can have a discussion when we have our board meeting next week, because I think it's a full board discussion that needs to happen with everybody present and weighing in and this, but I, I'm very interested in what this committee has to say about that as we move into discussion with the full board and, and Mark is the chair of the board. I'm very interested and you and I haven't had a discussion about that really, so. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, you know, the, the part of the point is that the children still have the needs no matter what is happening with the, with the pandemic and.
Some could argue more need.
Right, and it's really hard to true that up with the economic strife that, that, that communities all across the state and all across the nation are gonna have as a fallout from all of this. And it, you know, some would say it seems a little tone deaf to be asking for what we really need when people are gonna be struggling to put food on the table and maintain a roof over their heads. I, I personally go back to the discussion we had at the board meeting, which was, you know, we should ask for what we need and then, you know, we'll go from there, but, but things have changed since we made that decision. Mark, I'm sorry, I asked you a question and then I skipped talking.
What, what did you ask me, I'm sorry?
I asked you whether you had any opinion.
What question did you ask?
She wants to know your opinion.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, it's a full board decision, I'm not so sure the, you know, it, it is the problem of asking for 10% in, in these times, but the board made a decision to ask for what they thought they needed. It's, it's, the couple of times it was interesting that the question seemed to be that the Board of Finance was asking us to make the cuts rather than having them make the cuts, it's, I wasn't sure if kind of a different attitude from the Board of Finance than we've seen before, where they were more willing to, to wait in there with, with reductions, but.
That was really the question they asked, the question really was, what, what, does the Board of Ed want to reconsider the request before the, or force the Board of Finance to make the tough decision, they literally asked the question like.
That was one of, that was one of the ways it was asked.
Yeah, right.
There were several ways it was asked. You know, there were other ways it was asked, was it, is it ethical for you to be asking for this, I mean, by some, somebody asked.
Right, I, I saw that and, and my response to that was, is it ethical not to ask for what the kids need? It's the other side of the question, yeah.
Agreed.
Doug, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we have a, we have a Board of Finance member here with us who's been putting a lot of thought into this.
Why, thank you and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Most of you know I work in education too and have similar troubles just a few miles away. I've put in front of some of you numbers that suggest we're in politically difficult territory. You know, for whatever we might think's education costs or needs to cost, nonetheless, the taxpayers have never paid this much before. And therefore, the Board of Finance might have a long, difficult discussion to come anywhere close to what you've asked for because it's never passed before when the voters decided and the Board of Finance might have trouble thinking they should do something the voters have never done before. And that's why I, I tried to make so carefully sure that I had the numbers right, because I don't want to be going and raising alarm about things that aren't the case. So if I understand correctly, you've asked for about 9% increase in expenditures, but there's no increase to speak of in the revenues. And that creates a, you know, if that happened in your household, you'd go broke. And the Board of Finance is there to keep us from going broke. To put it in perspective, it looked like, when Tracy and I went over it this afternoon, about $5 million more than last year. To put that in perspective, that's the entire unassigned fund balance left in the town, all of it. Every fund emptied. And that's just not gonna happen, you, you can't sell bonds, you, you can't pass that in a referendum and you can't stay elected if you do it. And that's why we've asked you, is there any other consideration, or for that matter, is there any source of income we've overlooked? And, and Rita, this might be to your area. We tend to look at that direct revenue estimate as if it's a given, a solid, and yet, you know, that was based on what you plan to do with 9 or 10% more. If you were to have a smaller budget, would you have less direct revenue, is there some sort of scale there, or is that a fairly fixed number?
The number we were speaking of today?
Well, yes, yes, that mostly ECS number.
That's fixed.
Okay, so if we increase spending, that doesn't go up, and if we decrease spending, nor does it go down.
Oh, let, let me say this, the only thing that changes that number is the excess cost adjustment, which is typically not filed until the end of this year.
Okay, fine, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to have input, I'm interested in your discussion, because I'm living with this right now in the town next door. We're gonna lose a teacher out of it and then a small school, that's one out of 10. That's what's gonna happen in the town next door to keep their budget for the fourth year at zero. Fourth year at zero is not easy on my department, I assure you. So I, I feel some pain, Brendan, you know, I may have Chromebooks, but I'm not getting any new ones. All right, thank you so much for letting me speak.
Yes?
Would it be helpful for Dr. Youngberg again to remind us all, not, not in direct response just to you Doug, but also to remind us all how many positions we were talking about cutting if we had come in even at the, like, around 6% request.
Absolutely Lynn, in the, in the assistant, I'm sorry, acting superintendent's budget book, you'll see the, that there were 20 and a half positions that had to be cut just to get to the 5.92% increase, which sounds crazy, but that's because there's, we haven't been carefully monitoring how that staffing structure is being paid and where it's being paid from. So if we were to continue down the path below 5.92, Neil and I have had multiple conversations about this, somewhere between seven and a half to nine and a half positions for each percentage point, you, you drop down. So the 20 and a half and then every percentage point below that, we could be talking about 80 positions in total if you take us back down down that path, so you know, I, you're saying one in 10, well, we have about 300 teachers and, you know, certified teachers in district. So we have to get rid of, you know, 80 positions, they wouldn't all be certified, but that's a pretty big chunk.
Indeed, it's painful all around to have these rising costs for labor and viruses and yet no additional assistance during these tough moments. Typically, a town would have put money aside for this, but over the last 10 years, we've gone from 15% unassigned fund balance to now seven or so and this is the year you would have wanted that, you know.
It's frustrating to sort of look back historically and see that we haven't gotten what we've asked for multiple years in a row and then it's used against us that we're asking for so much, when the reason we're asking for so much is because multiple years in a row you haven't given us what we wanted and the only way around that is to, is to lay people off.
I understand it, I'm, I'm living in it myself.
Right, so you get it, I know.
I used to work 20 hours a week, I now work 12.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, this, this is how it goes if no one will pay.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks Doug.
So thank, thank you all for helping me understand your situation better, so that I don't misrepresent it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any?
Any other comments from board members?
I'm just, yeah, are there board members, and also are there any sort of parameters that we want to present to the board for discussion when we have this discussion next week?
I'm hoping that I have some information from the state at that point, because I think that could help the conversation right now. I still have no real answers. You know, I know that we're getting a donation of laptops from the, from the State Department of Ed, that's been publicized. Sounds like they are officially coming, right Brendan? Like they've even started the plan about how they're going to be distributed. So, you know, I said I wasn't going to believe it till I saw them, but they've already started the whole delivery plan, so. But that could potentially offset what we're asking for in the IT budget. Not all of it, but, you know, a good portion of it, because they're supposed to be donating several hundred laptops to our high school kids, so. And then when I hear from the, about where we are with the grants and the flexibility we may or may not have, I think I'll have more to offer the conversation. I do know we have other small expenses that are happening that didn't happen before. Like each time we do an elementary mailing, it costs us about $7,000 in postage, because we have so many kids without digital access. So $7,000 a week or so, every week or so, is not something we had, you know, counted on, but it's, it's not, it's unavoidable. We've also had to make purchases of additional digital libraries for those that do have access. So those are other things that we weren't going to purchase this year, because we didn't have the money, but we don't really have a choice. The kids have to have books to read and have to have access to, to literature for them to do the work that they're doing on their computer. So little things like that, that, you know, we're keeping track of all the spending on this end, but we're definitely buying things differently than we would have if the virus wasn't, you know, in effect right now.
Other questions? So you're anticipating getting this, this information to us before the board meeting?
They told me today, they didn't tell me the truth, because they said it was coming today, and I didn't get a memo. I was all excited, I called Rita. I said, we're supposed to be getting all this information, we can figure out what we're doing next, but it didn't come. So yeah, I hope to give you all an update in, on our Fri, you know, on the Friday email, so we can have a conversation about it at the board meeting.
Okay. All right, any, is there some other questions on that part, then we'll go right into the budget transfers. Do you have a slide for, for Rita?
You're on mute Rita. Sharing screens, unmuting, it's all.
Okay, here we go. So you can see my screen? Good? All right, so if you don't have the handout, I can go through them. The first open transfer is this one right here. Transfer for $1,000 to cover food services, fuel and gas, or their electric vehicle, I believe. So that's the first transfer. Actually, it's for the van.
Yeah, I was gonna say if it's gas, it's, yeah.
It's brand, I'm sorry. And I think in the past, it was put under other purchase services, and it really should be under fuel and gas. So they didn't have a budget there, and we're going to put one there. That's that transfer. The next one, transfers to cover student evaluation performed by, okay, so this one is a, we did not hire, we were unable to fill the position, the psychologist's position at Barrows, so we had to contract the services, and that's why we need to transfer 40,000 from teacher salaries to pupil services for evaluations, for special psychological evaluations. Any questions on that?
Okay.
All right, the third one is transfer for staff incentives and office supplies. I believe there was, there was not enough budget for the office supplies, so that's, and I'm taking it out of the savings in the liability. We had about a $40,000 savings in the liability insurance this year, and that's where it's coming from.
Says transfer funds needed for staff incentives and office supplies, but staff incentives aren't listed there.
It says for office supplies. That comes out of other supplies.
That, oh, that was the purchase we were making to celebrate each of the staff members for their teacher appreciation and we, paraprofessional appreciation, every one of the, you know, members who are part of the school commu, uh, community. We now have those staff incentives, they're actually water bottles. They're actually in boxes sitting in the hallway. When you first walk in, you probably saw them the other day Lynn. They're here.
Next one is pretty explanatory, Wyndham School, where the middle school bus transportation for sports is under budgeted, so we're transferring 4,000 from instructional into the athletic budget, athletics sports transportation. Even though there's no sports running now, we have to cover the deficit. Any questions?
I want to make sure I didn't misspeak, because, because Margaret texted me and said she thinks I gave a too high of an estimate on postage, so I'm going to get you that information and get back to you. I don't want to misspeak if I gave the wrong information. She doesn't think it costs us that much to send out the packets each week.
Maybe it's multiple weeks worth.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Probably, yeah.
I just noticed that this
So the last one Rita?
That should be number 49, I'm not sure why it didn't.
So we're taking 25,000 out of liability insurance?
So that's still the, so in the liability insurance, like I said earlier, we had a $46,000 savings, I believe it was, so we're taking another 10,000 to cover the admin postage, and that is the postage for the mailings, Tracy.
That's to date?
Up to date of, to cover the postage, yeah.
To date, 10,000 to date, and then more coming.
Mailings, we're going to need to transfer more money.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, do we have questions on the transfers? Otherwise, we'll just recommend that we move those to the board meeting.
Do you need a motion on that, or are we just saying we're making recommendations? I'm just thinking for Katina, taking the.
Yeah, do we? I don't know, do we, do you feel we need a motion? Sure, can I have a motion to move the budget transfers to the board meeting?
I'll make that motion to recommend.
I can't see.
Mary second.
The pictures here, so.
Okay, let me get, let me unshare. Hold on.
I can, Mary, okay.
Lynn made the motion and Mary seconded.
Sorry, having trouble.
Seconded.
What'd you do Rita?
I don't know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
It's all good.
Oh, there we are.
Is everybody?
Uh, just for the record.
Okay, anybody opposed?
You have to do a roll call.
Yeah, exactly, yes. Telemedia to a roll call vote.
All right. Katina? How about Brendan, why don't you do the roll call?
You're muted.
Yeah, I unmuted myself. Am I supposed to vote, since I'm just attending the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Are you getting the roll Brendan, or am I?
Katina's taking minutes.
Yeah. You're muted.
I muted, I muted myself, I just realized that. I'm like, I can go, I can do the roll call if you'd like, Mark.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. I?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mark, do you vote in this?
Yes.
Is that an a then?
That's an a.
All right, Ms. Haney? Paula Haney? Paul, are you there? Okay. Ms., Dr. Cabanon already voted aye, and that is it. Ms. Calucci?
Aye.
Okay. One last call for Paula.
Is that everyone?
That's everyone.
Yeah, even though Paula still appears on the screen, she's clearly not able to say anything.
Okay. All right, I guess that's, is there any other business Lynn that you know of? That's the end of the meeting.
That's the end of the meeting. I just want to remind people that we have a, a special Board of Ed meeting next Tuesday, the 28th of April at 7:00 PM. We thought originally it was that the Board of Finance might be having us in for a public hearing, which has now been changed to May 6th and May 13th. So we had already scheduled the 28th, so we should all expect to have a full board meeting on the 28th. Via Zoom, I'm assuming. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.